For appeal, et cetera, that I had made up.
Ask me to journal.
If anybody wants to have a look at it.
Like, where did this come from?
Um. Yeah. I had ChatGPT summarize for me the, all the legal arguments. So it's from case law, it's from the statutes. Throughout. At the end. On the last page, I have the two. The two. Sections from the RSAs. But most of what you're looking at there is. What it put together from all the case law about what we can do in a hearing. Well, can't. And when I studied it, rather than just taking it for granted, because I've been, I've been working with it a lot in the last couple of months. And it does do some wacko stuff sometimes.
What does Mark?
ChatGPT, yeah, the LLMs, they do, they'll do some wacky stuff, but this seems to be on pretty solid ground. Seems to be pretty, pretty reasonable. But I would not use this as. I would not cite this in law, I would just say, get a sense of what is going on today by looking at this. Your law is here on the back.
Yeah.
Um, and there is real case law out there that, that this is summarized from that we can study if you want to. What's that? Lawyer's not here tonight, but he did give us the information, he did give us his opinion about these appeals. So for the audience. I don't know what you guys expect to have happen here tonight, but I'll tell you what we are doing here tonight. We are considering two motions for rehearing. So two people, two groups have submitted a motion saying that they think we did it wrong. And that there should be a rehearing. So that's basically what we're going to talk about. I will open the meeting for public comment after we do our business. You can have three minutes each if you want to say something. But you should be real clear that. We are not talking about the Laramie development tonight. We are talking about whether we should have a rehearing about whether we did something illegal. Like we failed the follow some provision of the law. That's grounds for rehearing. Did we fail to follow our own procedures? Those rules or procedures that we have written, that would be grounds for a rehearing. Were we unreasonable? Which means, did we just ignore evidence of facts and that were presented to the board and just make our own wild decision? That's, that's pretty much it. So it's the burden of proving that we were illegal, unreasonable, or failed to follow our own rules of procedure. Is on the people who have written in their applications for rehearing. So we, we read those applications, which we have all done, our lawyer reads them. And we, we discuss briefly whether we think. We agree that there's a reason to rehear the case. At, if there were, if we decided to rehear the case. Then it would start from scratch. The applicants would re-submit. And we would start compiling a new case record. If we decide not to rehear the case. People are welcome to appeal to the Superior Court, in which case the sealed record, not sealed. The, the official record of this hearing will go to the Superior Court. So that's the, any of the paperwork that's been submitted. They won't take under consideration anything that you say tonight. Or anything that we say in our discussion about whether to rehear this, because that is not part of that original hearing. Are we clear on that? Is anybody unclear about that? So you can get up and talk at the end of the meeting if you like, but that won't be considered in any rehearing or any appeal or. It, it might, it might contribute to somebody's reasoning in a future hearing, you know, regarding Laramie Farms. But it doesn't have any effect on the, on. On our work tonight or what they, or what we did in the past.
That's a question.
Yes, sir.
The people who are appealing, if they learn tonight that we're not going to rehear the case, they choose to go to the, to enter a subpoena board. Do they have to stick with just what they have written for tonight, or can they elaborate on that?
They go to, no, they can't. Yeah, it's a good question. They first go to Superior Court. If the Superior Court doesn't satisfy them, then they can appeal to the Supreme Court. Okay.
Yes, thank.
All right, so as long as that's clear. Uh, the Superior Court will consider. The certified record of, of our hearing. They will, and then they will look to this meeting, to the minutes of this meeting and the applications and decide whether we should have reheard the case or not. But this material doesn't get, isn't part of the hearing itself. It can be a little hard to separate that stuff out, but I think that's the way it works. I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that's the way it works.
And Dan does address what you're talking about on the fourth day, that last period of time.
Yeah, I know. I got one more thing to say.
Oh, okay.
And this is important because it goes to what Dan was asking about. If you failed to mention in the application for this rehearing. Something. That you try to use later, the court will say no. So if you didn't lay the grounds for your future appeal in this application for a rehearing. The court will say, no, you should have raised that, you know, when you went to the ZBA, basically, it's, it's. You gotta give the ZBA a chance to correct their error. If you then go to the Superior Court and say, well. They didn't agree with us and we think this other thing is why they did it wrong. That doesn't work. Can we have a muting of the microphone, please? Thank you.
Well, yes.
Yes, please.
Um, so if we, so if it goes to the, the next level up, do they send it back to us to rehear? Or do they make a decision based on, do they go look back at our original thing and, and then rule on that?
They can vacate or they can remand.
Okay.
Or they can uphold, so they can say they did it right, leave them alone. Or they can say they did it wrong, they need to rehear it. Or they can say they did it wrong, start over from scratch. I'm not sure what the difference of those two are.
Okay.
But in any case, it's either going to come back to us, they won't make a decision outright, say, yes, they can have the variance. They are looking at whether we followed the law, whether we did it right. The subject matter is considered at this table and the process of lawful adjudication is, is considered by the courts going ahead of us. Does anybody in the audience, would you like to ask a question about that before we proceed? Yes, ma'am.
Is it possible for me to lay out copies of what I proposed so people in the audience can see that? So possibly read it if they have questions during. Um, public comment.
Tell us your name.
Samantha dessert or Gwen dessert.
Gwen dessert, okay. So Gwen is one of the applicants for, or one of the people raising the motion to, to have a rehearing. Gwen, your application is in the public record and people who want it can get it that way.
But I didn't wait to see. That, that makes it loud.
Yeah.
So it, would I be summing up correctly to say that this is a decision on whether we made? We came to our conclusion in the appropriate proper manner, not the validity of our conclusion?
This isn't about. They disagree with what we decided. If somebody thinks we did it wrong, then they can, then, then we can consent to do a rehearing. But you're right, we are not here to talk about the substance of the hearing. We're here to talk about whether we did it right or wrong.
Right.
And more specifically, when you look at the application, do you see in the application where they said, this is why you did it wrong? These are the grounds for our request for an appeal.
Okay.
There's a lot of language in there and the opinion of our attorney is that. There are no grounds for appeal in those applications. So. That's all I've got to say, that's the business that we have the force to, I used to consider those two applications for rehearing separately. Uh, we'll entertain a motion, we'll have a vote. And then after that, we'll, we'll deal with the minutes in the previous meeting.
What, what is even motion?
Motion will be. You'll move to grant a rehearing or move to deny the application for rehearing.
Okay.
And before we start discussing either of the applications, and this is again, we're going to discuss the applications. Not the previous year, before we discuss the applications, we'll need a motion to grant or deny the application. We'll second, and then we'll discuss the application that they give up.
Okay, so where do you want to start with?
Uh, generally, whoever has a strong feeling about granting or denying will make that, will make the motion in that direction and then they'll make their case for it. Uh, the second thing is just to get it on the table for discussion. Let's take the one that arrived first, which would be Gwen and Trey dessert.
Hey, I move that we. Didn't deny.
Correct.
I move that we deny the application of the. Doctor the names.
We'll get her to put it in.
Okay, of, of Mr. Mrs. Dessert. For a rehearing. Then all I have to say.
That's it.
I move that we deny the application of Trey and Gwen dessert for rehearing.
Yeah, the second.
Would we like to discuss it first?
Well, do the second to get it, to get it on the table to discuss.
I second it, sorry, I was thinking, it's like we were gonna. Yes, I.
Right, we have to have a motion to discuss.
I move that we, yes, I second Susan's motion to discuss the case of the application for rehearing of the desserts.
Okay. Can we say essentially what you said, but put it, put in some details? So we say. Uh, Susan Brown moved to deny the application of the desserts and name them and the date of their application. For a rehearing of the matter. We just want to make sure it's identified clearly in the record which motion we're talking about.
Is there any minutes that we correct?
What's that?
Will there be minutes of this meeting?
Yes, this is a public meeting, there will be minutes.
Can be minutes and help you publish.
Yes, right, just like any other minutes. Okay. I open the, the floor for the board to discuss. Anybody see anything in that application that looks like grounds for a rehearing? To me, it just looked like a point by point iteration of why they disagree with our decision.
Well, they have, they certainly have standing. With their butters. To, to bring it, so that's, that's the first thing. I'm not.
I don't disagree with you there, I think they have standing.
They definitely have standing, they don't demonstrate an injury. Because that is something that needs to be very specific, you have to be able to say precisely what it is. And I don't feel that they have said that, that it's an injury. It seems as if, from my understanding of this, that it has to be an injury to them.
As I said, this will cost us specifically this, well roughly this amount of money for these reasons.
Yes, that is not an injury to say it will cause traffic problems. If they, seem to me, if they said, listen, the driveway is coming out right in front of our house. Or crossing over our property or something where you couldn't completely say that it's causing them an injury. Yes, it would be acceptable, but I don't think it's enough.
I don't think we're seeing that.
To, to be able to say that. Uh, right now.
Dan or Bill, do you see anything in the application that looks like?
I don't think they really provided any new information that we hadn't considered.
Well, I would hope not, because we would not be able to admit that. This would be the fact where you hear the case, but what we're looking for specifically is, do, do they say anywhere? According to the law, you were supposed to do this and you failed to do that. Or you guys were nuts because you just rejected all the facts and made up your own stuff. I mean, I'm making crazy.
Well, sort of on the contrary, because what they've gone through here is point by point and, and whatever argued with us. Which in a way is saying we had gone through point by point. And this is not wrong, if we've gone through point by point, then it means that we've followed the procedure. And so it's not, you know, it's, we haven't been capricious at all, far from it. We have done this in an orderly fashion according to the, you know, we've answered all the questions that we were supposed to answer.
Mr. Chairman, is it possible at this time to ask the, the person that submitted this request to speak?
No, we don't think it.
Okay. Um, the one thing I see in here that would suggest perhaps our procedures were not 100%.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is at the bottom of page two, I agree with both Madeline and Bill. Um, said that they are arguing each of our points, um, but that's not what we're here really to, to discuss. Uh, we're here to discuss where our procedures had all faulty. Um, they, I'll begin with the, from the second to last sentence on page two. In the May fourteenth meeting, Mr. Regan stated that he felt the development would alter the essential character of locality. And Chairman Dean stated that the general public may feel, uh, it would alter its character. Mr. Regan brought a concern, blah, 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 about the school, police department. Uh, Chair Dean referenced studies done by, uh.
And a chair?
Tuchery, uh, planning development and development would only generate additional fourteen to sixteen children. Said the Bascoa School District Administrator states. There'll be no strain on schools, the police chief does not anticipate impacts to their services. But the actual study done was never provided, the last two claims were never brought up in previous meetings. So what I'm taking from that is they, they're suggesting that your summary was inaccurate.
Or that I didn't provide any evidence to back it up.
Right.
Yeah.
But, but it is not true that it didn't come up in the meeting, it did, we asked. But, and we had the figures. That, and we talked to the fire chief, he was here and we talked to him.
Fire chief, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, we talked to the fire chief and we talked to.
Lynn Ford's. Lynn Ford is the administrator of this, of the school board.
Yeah, they, they said that fourteen to sixteen would be an impact and.
Right.
And, and I don't know if I'm allowed to say this, but that makes sense because our school population is down for it. So it made sense that fourteen to sixteen kids would not impact the school. Why you'd be good for the school?
Yeah. So I think what the applicant is suggesting is, um. I hate to try to put words into their mouth, but, um. Did we get an official report and were they speaking in a official capacity when they spoke with the fire chief? Absolutely, I get that, there was, he was introduced as, as Chief Neely. I don't know, was she here in an official capacity and were we?
So the question really is. Was it illegal or improper? Is it, is it acceptable for us as board members to use our own information and to use our own experience to make judgments? So in that case, I know Lynn Ford, I know her role. I know her professionally, many years as being the school board administrator. And I have seen her testify numerous times in. A variety of settings, and so I have developed a, a personal opinion that I can trust her when she stands up and says something, especially in public.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think a court would say Chairman Dean erred in relying on that information to form his opinion.
Do you think, uh. A reasonable person could have requested that we as a board, um, ask for the study that was conducted?
I do. I don't think we're required to though.
My feeling, sorry about the school was, okay, what is it? It, five, are there five grades in the school?
Can I remind you that we need to talk about?
Yeah. So.
Are there grounds in that for this appeal?
I don't feel that there are because in my head, this seemed reasonable, doing a little bit of math. And considering that, considering that the school has fixed costs, the janitors, the teachers, those are all there. Are, is that number of people going to, 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 it seems reasonable to say, I don't think, doesn't sound to me like a number. That's going to make a significant different, difference to a structure that's already up and going.
Right. It's not, it doesn't sound like it's unreasonable for us to rely on that information. It doesn't sound like it's illegal. I'm comfortable with those opinions myself. There, there is something to consider that. If we decide we wanted to grant a rehearing, that's not a freebie. If we, if we decide to grant a rehearing, it's like, it's not, there's no damage done, we can redo it just, you know, because we want to be super sure and super careful. We can't do that. We have to have legitimate grounds to rehear a case. Because it costs people time and money and it can open us to liability if, if we don't do it right. I just want to put that out there as a, there is another side to this. Okay, but sometimes I think, well, let's just rehear it, let's just reconsider it, but I have to remind myself, you can't just do that.
It doesn't seem capricious or illegal.
No, it's not.
That, that we based our decision on, on that information.
I thought we asked good penetrating questions. To get the information of the fourteen to sixteen kids. And I was. Content with the answers that we got, that they were thoroughly researched by the people that gave them.
Going down this list, I don't, by the illegal and unreasonable. I don't believe that we did anything that was illegal or unreasonable. Certainly, some people may have stronger feelings on that than others. One person's unreasonable is another person's. Uh, we followed proper procedures and I don't think our decision was capricious. We had, we had two full. Hearings for it, and we extended the hearing to, to have more time to think about it and to hear more people. It's like, that is certainly not capricious, considering the amount of time that we dedicated to it. And if there was an error in the interpretation or the application, I certainly don't see that. And again, my feeling is going the way this was laid out, that, that again, sort of shows that. We applied those criteria because this is what they're responding to. And those criteria, the five, you know, the, the, the. Real estate, you know, the values, the hardship, those are things that we went through as we should have gone through.
I agree. Um, I was just reminded about the expert opinion and. In her point three, substantial justice is done. The desserts, Gwen, excuse me. How am I correctly supposed to pronounce your last name?
It's a dessert.
Dessert, okay, thank you. Chair Dean also reminded the ZBA cannot ignore expert testimony that is not contested. And I would like to be, I may not have made this clear ever. They, when they say you can't ignore test expert, uncontested test, expert testimony, what they mean is. By another expert. So if we had two opposing expert views, we can, then we have to, then we have to consider those contested. My, my personal opinion doesn't. Isn't, if I'm not an expert about something, my personal opinion or John's from the public. Isn't enough to consider that one public, that one expert opinion's contested.
Okay.
I think I said that very clearly.
He sensed to me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was not very.
I think what he means is contested doesn't mean just Joe Public saying, I disagree. It means another expert disagrees.
And has to go on the record officially at the same level that the original expert contested. So if we had a realtor in the, in the audience who just stood up and said, I, no, that's not true, that's wrong. You know, these, these property values are going to go down. That's not sufficient to offer a contest to the appraisers letter telling us a different opinion. Now, if that realtor goes home and. Writes a formal letter and, and establishes their credentials and then submits it to the board, that's an official, that's an expert opinion. And then we take that, we consider the other opinion contested and then we have to decide who we follow. That's what I, does that make more sense? Right.
No, we just had people standing up and saying things.
However.
However.
It is also written in our manual that, quote, the ZBA does not have to accept the conclusion of experts on the question of value.
That's true.
It's also true that the applicant is not going to bring in somebody that has a different opinion than their expert.
Yep.
So to think that we're going to have two experts with two different opinions is highly unlikely.
The, the law is pretty clear about that, though. We can't just ignore expert opinion in the favor of.
But yet the law also says we don't have to accept the conclusion of the expert.
Right. But is, is that the law or is that the, is that the handbook? Is that case law or is it the handbook?
Um, the.
It's at the NIH MA's handbook. I trust them if it is.
Yeah, it's the, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, Business and Economic Affairs, zoning book, adjustment, yeah.
Yeah, they're not, they're not going to steer.
We decided. To accept. The opinion of a certified expert. Having listened. To a lot of people.
Are we retrying?
No, we're not retrying, okay, I just wanted to be clear that.
Again, it seems as if, were we in that decision, were we capricious or illegal? And I, 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 I don't see how you could possibly say we were capricious or illegal in accepting the advice of somebody who's a state certified professional. That, that's the question.
At, at worst, we might be criticized for not seeking, um, another. Another opinion. To me, that, when I read that opinion. It looked independent. I didn't see any association between the applicant and the appraiser in any way that would have been improper. I didn't see any conflict of interest, that's what I'm saying.
We didn't ask the questions to know if there was a conflict of interest.
Sure, we did.
Same with us.
I don't think so.
I do.
I won't take shame of that. We, we could have, but the letter on its face, and we have to take things at face value. The letter on its face was pretty clearly an impartial statement by a licensed appraiser.
Well, it was only for not private testing games.
Well, sometimes I wish I were a private investigator, so it's more fun.
But again, I mean, I don't see, I don't see any reason, we, unless somebody had gone, I don't see any reason why. We are necessarily held to second guess the state licensing boards.
I'm trying not to retry this, but I will just say, at the last meeting, you made a very nice articulate argument. Why we should trust that individual, they were certified, et cetera, they're professional, they do not be biased. However, if we got somebody locally, they might be biased. So obviously, there's room for bias in the profession. And I can think of a lot of.
I don't believe I said that they were biased.
We can go to the table.
Anyway, let's.
Let's not.
Go through this again. Ben, I don't think it was illegal or capricious, and that's the question here.
Right, I, I sympathize with you, it's a, it's a point you feel strongly about. And I sympathize with you also. Is it okay if we set that aside?
We ought to think about it if it comes up again.
You should think about what we're requesting.
We did.
Yes, I think that's room for.
And it's a shame that the largest project ever in NFL is not going to have that.
Oh, boy.
Well, I have the opportunity to request, where did you get this fourteen to sixteen number? Can we see that report, please? Could we get another expert in here to give an opinion on value? That's what I'd like to have seen more of.
Let me point out that our folks, let me point out that our hearings were only on, this is in no way related to this rehearing. But just to mollify. This is, we did a very small part in the last hearing, we had two variances. Um, and arguably, the number of statements they're going to generate is, is not relevant in those hearings. One could argue that. Um, and arguably, the number of statements they're going to generate is, is not relevant in those hearings. One could argue that. There will be many opportunities for people to ask the questions that you want asked. In an appropriate forum where the developer should be asked to disclose their sources. And have those sources documented so they can be discussed appropriately.
Seems as if there are opportu, is this necessarily all on us? If there were a question, it seems that anybody in the public could have. Made a proposal or, you know, written some sort of official complaint or proved to our, come to us to say. That, or, or even here, if, if perhaps somebody had come with some other substantial. Information or something new to make me feel differently about that. And people had the opportunity to do that. The same thing with the fourteen and the sixteen. Thanks. People have had plenty of opportunity to do this. We didn't turn them down. And again, as I say, I do not feel that, I certainly haven't been capricious. I thought about all of this a great deal. Um, and I don't think anything that's been done has been illegal or unreasonable.
Do we need further discussion? Somebody like to call the question or is there anything?
Let's call the question.
Let me make sure everybody's okay with that. All right, the question before you is, shall we deny the application for rehearing? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's, aye, so five zero, the desserts application for rehearing is denied. Doesn't mean we disagree. Okay, we have another application for a rehearing. Rob, I don't see that printed out. Am I just missing it? Oh, I've got it here. It's the one pager. Yeah.
Does anybody need?
Nope. Okay, the matter before you is Linda P. Jones and Al J Elvestad. Move to rehear the Laramie Farms variance hearings. And again, I, I see no, I see nothing in here that gives grounds for. That gives grounds for a rehearing. Again, I see disagreement with our decision.
We have to have a motion to put it on the table.
I'm sorry, thank you.
I, I move that we discuss.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
The request from, the motion for rehearing filed by Linda Jones and Al. Of Elvestad, sorry, on June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Can I clarify for a minute? You want to move to discuss, not move to approve or deny?
You're supposed to.
We move, we, we just need a motion so that we can discuss.
Yeah.
So do you want a move to deny or a move to approve?
I want to move to deny, but that's, it doesn't matter whether it's approved, denied, or discussed. It's to put it on the table.
I second the motion of Susan.
All right, so we have a motion to deny the. Application by the Jones, Elvestad. For rehearing in the matter of the Laramie Farms variance requests. We have a second.
What?
We have a second.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then they, they have standing, they're butters.
We gotta vote. Don't we?
No.
They have a motion now.
They have, they certainly have standing. They are butters. Um, again, I don't feel that injury has been demonstrated. Or that they have shown that we've done anything illegal or capricious in our decision.
I agree, I don't. Mr. Reagan?
I'm going to respectfully disagree. Um, I think they picked up on something that I'm embarrassed that I didn't pick up on. Um, the fact that, uh, the real estate expert drove through. Um, the drivable streets and never actually saw their property. I think, um. I want to speak to myself. I missed that. And I think, uh, in your chat GPT. Overview here by, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, number three, legal and procedural errors. The CBA made an error and, uh. Ignored or misinterpreted evidence. I think we've misinterpreted the evidence.
That's interesting. Um, I don't think I agree. I don't think it rises to the level of, well. I don't think I.
I don't know how. An appraiser is supposed to do the job. I assume that he goes to the town offices and the tax records and he drives around and looks and thing. And based on that information, the office, he, he offers an opinion. So, um. I'm not sure that I think it's an error. That he focused on residential properties only. Um. The. The Jones Elvestad property is residential.
It's residential, exactly. I don't see that, just because it doesn't have a house on it, it doesn't mean that it's not residential. It's in a residential area and it's owned for residents.
And it does have a residence on it, the house they live in.
Yeah, the house they live in.
Would he, did I ask them? Ask Ms. Jones if they can see, their property can be seen from Maple Street? We should not. All right, um, see if we can, our property to the west is not accessible by road. And there is nothing indicating that Mr. Cannon ever saw it. I think in order to give a good opinion on a piece of property, you have to be able to put your eyes on.
We don't know that he didn't.
Well, in his letter, he didn't say that he did. He stated what he did in his letter.
But we don't know that he didn't. And we don't know that it is in fact. Truly necessary for an appraiser to see each of the pieces of property. That is, that's an opinion you're bringing, which is fine, you can do that, yeah.
Because if the appraiser's job was to discuss what effect. The project would have on. A butters, that is a financial decision, not necessarily a decision about the. Effect on the property. So I'm saying, it's not necessarily a decision that's based on seeing the property. It's based on things like the neighborhood and the value. Of the property. I mean, I do see, I mean, I completely get your point, but it seems to me that in this case. That that may not have been particularly relevant. Since he saw that he can see their property from the road. He may not be able to see, you know, every single border of the. You know, did he, did he walk around on all the other pieces of property? I don't know. I, 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 I don't necessarily see that that's pretty. Necessarily relevant.
I think from my own experience, I think too.
Need to be able to hear you.
I think that one of the, based on my own experience in Enfield.
Please don't speak.
Is you must look at the maps. And you must go to the town offices and look at where the property lines are and. Who abouts whom and the roads and all the rest of that part of it. As well as drive around. I think that you get, you have to have both pieces of information.
So if you learned that he did not come to the town office and look at the maps, would that concern you?
I would simply expect as a licensed.
I want to make sure the audience got a chance to hear Susan's comment. Did everybody hear what she said? Let me see if I can summarize, and you tell me if I've got it right or not. Susan is saying that. In order to properly appraise an area, you have to consider, you have to look at the tax maps as well as driving around.
Yes.
Is that basically it?
Yes, that's basically it. And I would assume. As a certified appraiser, that that's part of his process. And that he did it. Cause he offered a professional opinion. He's a professional certified appraiser, so we need to assume. That he did his job correctly.
Yeah, we're required by law to assume that, to take it at face value.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I just don't. I don't see how we can tell him to do his job. Doug, clear?
I, I think he's a professional too. These people seem like they are ethical, above board developers. So I'm not questioning that. However, I also think when he's writing a letter to say, hey, did what you asked me. He would put into the letter everything that he did. And all he said was. Quote, I had visited the subject site and driven through the streets and they made surrounding areas to observe the existing properties. And then he goes off to, based on my experience, blah, blah, blah. Doesn't say, I looked at any maps. Doesn't say I stopped in and saw Rob Taylor, talked to him. Um.
I mean, another, if he walked around on the property, then he certainly could have seen the Jones property because it's right next to us. So it's not as if he necessarily didn't see it. I mean, I.
He doesn't say he walked around the property. He says, I visited the subject site.
He visited. Visited the site and drove through the streets. And I assume, I don't know, every appraisal that I've ever gotten in my life has been based that I. On compar, you know, they go and look at comparable pieces of property. They look at your piece of property. They look at the taxes. They look at the state of the building on it. They.
I'm not going with this. I'll surrender.
I think Mr. Reagan knows all that.
I will not be voting in favor, but I will apologize that I think I've misinterpreted the data. Um, and I didn't push hard enough on that.
Well, we're not. It's, it's not, I don't think it's grounds to, to rehear the case.
I neither.
I think that had people come to the meeting and raised the points that you're making now, we would have looked further into the matter. They didn't, we didn't. Um. I don't think a judge will find fault with that. They may, they may very well write in their opinion, be more careful in the future, guys, but I doubt it. I, I don't think this is, I don't think it's a stretch to believe your, your expert testimony.
Seems like today, today's day and age with Google Maps and airing photos and street view. Even driving.
We asked for drone photos and we got them.
I mean, the feed, the question here is on, did we make our decision? How did we, it's all about how did we make our decision? We made our decision based on expert testimony. We made our decision on two hearings where lots of people. Got to talk. We made our decision based on a step-by-step consideration of what the, the criteria. For making that decision are on. So to me, it seems that we have not. Done anything that would cause. A need, that creates a need for a rehearing because we did what we were supposed to do in the proper way that we did it. We didn't do anything illegal. We did not act in a capricious manner. That's what this is about tonight. If we, how did we make our decision? And did we make it in such a way that they should, it should be reheard? I personally don't think that we did. I think that we acted as responsible, informed members of a zoning board.
Thank you.
I'd like to, I'd like to. Call the question.
Any further discussion needed? Uh, before we vote, I remind you, we're not voting if we would like to rehear the matter. We're voting if we. Have legal reason to rehear the matter. I think we don't. That's me. Right. So, um, the motion before you is, shall we deny the application of the Jones Elvestad? Uh. To rehear the. Laramie Farms variance, um, applications. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed to denying the request?
Yeah.
Right, okay, so four to one. The Elvestad Jones application for rehearing is denied. We have one brief. Thing, piece of business left, and then we will hear from the public on anything they want to talk about. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
I moved to, yes, I second the motion to approve the minutes.
But there are, there are few small corrections.
Okay.
Want them?
Yes, we do want them.
Okay, uh, first of all. This year, I'm the vice chair, Madeline and I stand.
Line six.
Okay, on page four. Line one thirty-five. I think you've got to take that out. On line one thirty-five.
That the motion, yes.
That's the motion before the board. It's not a sentence with the that in it.
Sure.
Okay, um, if you want to. Pick nits in line one forty-seven, there should be a period between requested and seconded. On line one fifty-two, if they. I think instead of request, the second request should be objectives.
Violate the spirit of the zoning ordinance. Thank you so much. That was the one that I couldn't find.
That's where I put.
Five two.
I thought objectives and you think it's spirit, whatever you guys want.
It's the spirit of the zoning ordinance, it's just that.
One sixty-eight, I think addressed, might as well just say said.
Yes.
Line. One seventy-two. I'm not sure. First, I thought it should. There should be. Density, but now I think densely is correct.
Can you give me the line number again?
Uh, one seventy-two, so somebody else say something here.
Mr. Finger said that he felt building more densely leaves more land.
Yeah, I think that's correct, yeah. Um, and I'm wondering on line one ninety-three about some punctuation. She said that the impacts of those who live nearby are one thing versus the entire town are another. And then. Is that, is that a semicolon there or is it?
It's a semicolon.
Isn't it a semicolon? Um, and then it says she felt the board has an interest in the whole town to consider. I would have broken that and made it into two sentences. Um.
And I wonder what the tape says at that point.
Line two oh eight, buildings should be buildings. To be built taller, taller, it's more than one building.
Get that last one, two oh eight.
Page. Eight, line three thirty-four. Buildings should again be plural.
Effects of. Raise concerns about the effects of the much higher buildings on this hill.
That's correct. That's all I have. No, wait a minute. Um, on line three hundred, to secure safely or safety? What's correct and B there? Line three hundred on page eight.
You can check the RSA chapter six seventy-four seventeen, because that was, was taken directly from it, so you could see what is correct.
That's all I've got. They're always beautiful with you. You did such a good job. Thank you.
Yeah, just one on line one thirteen. And you could check the tape, and this could be exactly what I said, but it says, Mr. Reagan said he felt the African had done the mineral required to show the surrounding properties are not diminished. But he did not feel he would vote against this variance. That I said that last part.
Okay. I'll double check.
Okay, thank you. And if I said it, I said it.
Show that the, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished.
That's right.
You know, I'm saying the last part, uh, it's line one fourteen, I guess.
Whether you would vote yes.
Vote against this variance.
So we have two issues there. He's not sure. He's not sure. He said that.
Yep.
And Susan and I think it should be, show that the values of the surrounding properties.
I mean, mark that close. You said.
All right. Anything else? I know Seeley wants to talk. Recognizing Seeley yet.
Mine, I did not serve on that hearing and my name is listed in one line with everybody else. So I wanted clear that I was not sitting.
It is clear because we do not have anywhere that we said we've seated Seeley Alfiero. If you, if you were a seated member, that's, that's what we do.
Instead of go getting me some other thing for it. I'm asking, do not, do not put me.
You don't want your name associated with that hearing, man.
Cause it looks like, well, that person sitting was sitting too. So that's the first thing I thought of when I read, started reading that.
Could we have a, a line after seven where you say ZBA Board of Adjustment members present, you've got alternate? Could we have? Let me see down here.
It says alternates, Seeley. It says.
No, I know what she, I know what she means.
Yeah.
I understand. And she's got a point.
And alternates not seated.
No, let's do this.
Put an asterisk and, and do something at the.
Just break another line that says alternates to see, oh, you know.
Maybe if you guys let me finish my thought, it'll, it'll come out. I'm a little slower tonight. I'm sorry. After the big bold block about public hearings, uh, Mr. Taylor read the case. Okay, so before I start speaking on line forty-six, insert, no alternates seated, um, hearing the case are, and name the people that are hearing this case. Can we do that?
Probably a good idea. It's, it's, it's probably a good idea.
Something we should probably do every time.
Yeah.
Say no alternates seated, hearing this case are well, fingered, Dan Regan, Natalie Johnson.
Cause those are the people who are voting.
And those are the people who participated in the deliberation. Thank you, Seeley. Appreciate that.
Well done.
Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes as amended? Opposed? Five, one, minutes are approved. Okay, public comment. You may speak for three minutes. Everybody gets a chance before anybody gets to speak a second time. Please raise your hand. Stan, say your name for the record. Seeley Alfiero, would you like to speak as a member of the public?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Let me start my timer. We are not, let me be clear, we are not going to be responding. We're not gonna argue with you. We're not gonna.
That's fine.
This is for you guys to get on the record.
First of all, I deplore all of you. Please go get training. Not to have somebody like Mike, although I have a lot of respect for Mike and what he does, to come in at the eleventh hour and give you information and tell you how to answer, what is this and what is that? That's not the way to do things. The other thing is that we have a zoning and that is clear to me. And I think half the people and more than half the people in this town that they do not want this, they don't want their hills chopped up, their steep slopes chopped up. They don't, they don't wanna look at the sky and see lights all over the place. I cannot believe none of you brought that up or looked at it for that height. And I'm so discouraged and really upset that the way this has been handled. It's terrible, absolutely terrible. I said my piece.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Gwen?
I one hundred percent accept it, but it's what you said. Couple of things I'd like to point out. Um, I've looked at all of the meeting notes. I do not see one or listed as a guest in any of them or quoted in any of them as saying that.
Good.
As for the, um, appraiser, how they do their assessment and looking at the tax maps. If you go on the website, the Town of Enfield website, and you look at tax map fourteen, which is where that's proposed, proposed. It has a developed property on there. It is not developed. So the tax map that you should be looking at is not accurate. It actually, when you click on tax map fourteen, it shows fourteen A is the map. When you try and look at tax map property thirty-three, which is where my property is, it's not listed. It shows as tax map thirty-two. So you can't even find tax map thirty-three on the website. So if they did look at the tax maps, they were looking at inaccurate information. Um, and I'd also like to say, I feel I did list out facts of the, what is it that you're supposed to make a decision if it's unreasonable? These reasons must be clearly articulated and supported by evidence or arguments. And I feel I did state those. Um, I listed the community survey. I listed, um, the, I don't know how credible the realtor about the assessments of the properties. I did have that, you know, information backing that. I do feel your reasons were unreasonable as far as not redoing the rehearing. But again, I one hundred percent agree with what Seeley said. I, I feel that the town itself was not heard. Um, there are thoughts of the development.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Mr. Smith, right? Doug Smith?
Douglas Smith out of Enfield. Been here for about twenty-five years. Many of you know I love this place. I approach it in fact that I'm, are many of the people, can I do a better place? I cannot see this development in the best interests of the people of Enfield. And I, I don't think it's a bad idea, but add to the congestion on their streets. It's going to require additional town services and it's going to pay havoc with our characters or rural town, all of which we, we want. To sort of give a variance, to bring in project in that people don't want or need in the first place. I think it's, it is, is wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. What else? David Bouffay?
David Bouffay, Maple Street. Rob, you and I wrestled quite a bit with the, uh, uh, new website, uh, this afternoon. Uh, from midday on to try and find, uh, the recordings and the minutes um, from these hearings. Um, they were not easily available. Finally found them even with the help of town staff. Um, and I understand that not only this meeting, but several others. Um, the, uh, teams presented, uh, system, which is now working, according to those, um, labels, um, was not working for two of the hearings, at least of, of this board and including people that should have been allowed to speak. That I believe if this is warned as available on Teams, there's an obligation of the town to provide that. Thank you.
I have to address that. I do not believe that is correct. I believe the team system was working correctly and people in attendance were able to ask questions if they wanted to. If you have proof that is not so, please let the town know, cause we need to know it.
I have.
All right. So submit that to the town. Yes, ma'am?
This is the largest development Enfield has ever seen. Everyone in Enfield, everyone in Enfield is likely to be impacted in one way or another for the rest of the time they live there. I want to pause. I want to thank you first. You all worked very hard. I was at one, every one of these meetings. I understand the complicated tasks that you've had. All right? But going forward, I'm gonna speak when dessert. Talk about expert. I've been following this property ever since it was ironed. Okay, so I know a lot about this property. And one of the things that's in here that concerns me as a resident of Maple Street, there's a big watershed. There's wetlands in back of Maple Street. And one of the things I think that was excellent in the facts that Gwen did supply, that I really think whether you look at this, the planning board looks at this, is on her application or whatever you want to call this, at the bottom, well, first of all, it's referring to zoning. I'm assuming these are Enfield zoning and floodplain development ordinance. So it's your bone ordinance for this town. And at the bottom, article four, section four oh one, one dash M states that no structure shall be placed, located, or constructed with fifty feet from the seasonal high water line of any wetland. Based on the maps the developers provide in the April nineteenth, meaning units sixteen and seventeen of the townhouse as an apartment building, one and two, all violate this ordinance. Now maybe that will be addressed down the road. I will bring it up again because my concern is what's gonna happen, especially if they blast up there and sink those houses? What's gonna happen to the watershed that all of us who live along Maple Street are gonna be impacted by? And that floodplain that's behind us. I think Enfield's gonna see some problems here that they're gonna later say, whoops, we didn't figure that out. Okay? So that's number one. Number two, property.
You have thirty seconds left, ma'am.
I'll ask to speak again in just a minute. I really think that you haven't looked carefully at the land. There are several comments that have been made, um, about, oh, there's nothing up there. You can't know a property by looking at a map. I really think you need to have another developer, another realtor coming in and give a second opinion. This is the value of people's hopes. This is the value of livelihoods.
Todd?
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak?
Truly great. I think a lot of time and money and consideration and input from the public has been put into the master plan. And I would hope that every board would use that master plan to follow it and what this community wants. See the happening there, I urge you to do that.
Thanks, Rob. Who wants to speak online?
Nancy.
Nancy Smith, speaking from Teams. You have three minutes, ma'am.
Oh, I won't need that long. And this is Lindsay.
Hi, Lindsay.
Using my mom's computer. Um, I just wanted to say that I think that the zoning board did a good job. And that your job was this zoning ordinance and not the planning board's job, not the traffic um, job, the state of the, the N dot, NH dot, um, nobody else's. It was this one specific piece. So I don't think that half of the town or more than half the town is against it. I think that there's a lot of people that do appreciate this project, but that's not the scope of the zoning board. And I think that you all did a good job dealing with the very small piece that you have. You're not responsible for the website. You're not responsible for if people can find the minutes. You're not responsible for the traffic impact. Like those are other pieces that are gonna come down. And there's a lot of different opportunities for that. You did your job looking at this one piece. The zoning ordinances are way out of date. We all know that. They're gonna get redone right now. So you had to look at this piece and where it makes sense for that. So I just wanted to say, um, contrary to where a lot of people say, and also I do want to say one other thing. As part of the, um, uh, master plan is to bring in more housing. Again, not the zoning board's responsibility. Yours was about the height. So I think that you stuck to your job and the scope of your job, and the people are putting a lot of other things on you. I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Yes, sir? I'm sorry, a little louder, Forrestly. Bruce Popkin.
I am one of the butteries of property. And I just wanna say that it in my, I'm a retired professional architect for conservator. And in my life, I have worked on, uh, preparing condition assessment reports for properties of all kinds. And I have either done or supervised the comforts of them. When we prepare a report, we are very, very specific about what we looked at and how we looked at it and to what level we were able to, not able to get information. So first, you know, we talk jokingly about leadership surveys. That's what this sounds like to me. I would have expected a, a, a very thorough examination and statement of exactly what happened. What I did, what I didn't do, what I could do, I was unable to do and why. So, um, that's just one element I can speak to as a profession. And, um, and I'm not talking about, you know, making evaluations on, uh, I, I should say, it's just not about the valuation of the property, but it's kind of go about doing any kind of assessment as a profession. And, um, I, I just wanna make my two cents. I can also disagree in the scope of this property, uh, development. It's clearly over. And I don't think it's appropriate. And I don't understand. I mean, I was unable to attend any previous meetings. I'm sorry about that. But I just don't understand how, um, you could have ignored the, uh, the existing zoning ordinance to such a degree. And, uh, I'm thoroughly against the properties of development in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Popkin. Okay, we're letting the public comment right now. I need to page again. I'm aware. Anyone else want to speak? Or where you'd like another three minutes? I'll grant them.
I'd be shorter than that. I want to say that, um, I've looked at the ZB, there's no ZBA meeting minutes from our public hearing. But I did.
That is not true.
It's not online. My husband and I both looked today.
It is not true that there are no meeting minutes from our hearings. They may not be available to you on the website. They are available to some people, but the official filing place for ZBA minutes is with town, um, planning coordinator. So if you can't find them online, you can come and get them from our zoning administrator.
Okay, we will do that. Thank you.
I just don't want that recorded as a fact. It's not.
Okay, it's confusing because if some are posted and some aren't, it's unclear. So I want to say.
I'm restarting your three minutes, by the way.
Thank you. I can say that. So what I looked at was May thirteenth, I think, I may have that date wrong. It was in May. It was a meeting that was videotaped. I looked at that today. And I really don't think that you folks had a very clear idea of the properties. Um, and I think I would have expected, if I was on the zoning board and if I was deciding a project of this nature, I would want to know a lot more about all of the properties. Um, I think there were statements that were made, um, none of the other properties in the area that are large. Linda's property and Al's property is twice the size. Okay, that was, uh, a misstatement. Um, and then there was also something to, uh, we weren't, Mr. Dean, you said, we weren't thinking of roof four of others at all. Okay, so those were, you know, and then Madeline, you talked about zoning through Hampshire. And oh, this would be great because it's not gonna affect any agricultural land in Enfield. And it's not gonna affect any open fields in Enfield. Open fields, if you had looked at Linda. Open fields, if you had looked at Linda and Al's property or if this Realtor had looked at the value of their property, they have these beautiful, beautiful fields. And that development is going to go two hundred feet. These big buildings about fifteen or maybe thirty feet from their border, seven, seventy-five feet high with an adjacent on their property pond. Tell me, Mr. Dean, you had talked about in um, this video that I took a look at about if, let's see, sorry, um, basically that if one person was affected adversely by this, there's a, there's a, a statement. And I'm trying to find it in here. Um, uh, due diligence, something to do with due diligence. One person is a, is adversely affected here. And I just don't understand how you could say that at a meeting and then it doesn't apply to a petition to look at this again. At the very least, if you have a Realtor come back and look at the value of the properties, you'd have a second opinion. I really, Mr. Deegan, you have been Deegan, is that how you pronounce it? Reagan? I really appreciate your diligence in trying to get that to happen.
Are you proud?
And with extensive conversation.
I appreciate the entire board. I think everybody on this board, they all have ten percent. And we might have had difference of different views about opinion, but um, I, Seeley?
Yes, I'd like to respond to Lindsay's, some of her statements about the zoning ordinance. And I don't think people understand this in general. The zoning board, uh, the ZBA is required to file, follow by law, the zoning ordinance. That's what the people voted on. It's not the no one coming. It's, it's what's there. And I want, Lindsay, you want to, you need to understand that. And the other issue is that zoning ordinance is now way off. Okay, you might not agree with the zones with three acre, one acre, but there are reasons behind that. And that's been, that's been discussed over time. But I really think you're really giving it a bad taste of what zoning is. That is a land use ordinance. That is hopefully protecting what we do have. Our lakes, our ponds, our forests, that's what we, that's what we're trying to protect. And I hope that continues on the new one.
Thank you, Seeley. Tony? Who was that? We're going to hear from Tony Di Felice. You got three minutes. Go ahead, Tony.
Please, uh, Bay Street Canyon Residence Home Property in Enfield, on Bay of Maple. Uh, I'd like to follow up in that people purchase properties based on the existing zoning. Uh, when we purchased our property, we knew there was a old plan for single-family house. Uh, then there was a new plan or a new application uh, for the zoning to get changed. The town decided to change the building, uh, the zoning to quarter acre. That's, you know, you got to accept that. Uh, what's hard to accept and hard to digest is a board and the lawyers apparently taking the decision to override what's been voted for and make their own decision. I, those of you I know personally, I respect. Uh, this is a hard job, I know that, but I think you made a lot of mistakes. Um, and I think if the town helped the folks uh, understand the process as much as they helped the developers, you made a different position right now.
Thank you, sir. CBA does not override. We grant variances when there is a legal case that says the the objectives and guidance of, or the objectives of the zoning ordinance, which is that townspeople would be unfairly harsh to a particular landowner and would prevent them from exercising their constitutionally guaranteed rights to develop their land. That is what the zoning board does. We do not change the ordinance. Um, we do not rewrite things on our own. We follow a fairly strictly set out set of rules and procedures. Okay, is there anybody else online who wants to talk? Tony, I'll give you three more minutes.
The board is contradicting themselves several times. Those three someone said would not reply, respond to what was said. It's happened several times and disagreement something that was said.
There are some things I can't let go onto the recording that are, that are wrong.
Well, clearly what I'm saying is.
It is, certainly it is your opinion, but you are stating it as fact and it is wrong. And I have to correct it so that the official records of the board don't contain a fallacy about what the board does. I don't want people who view this recording in the future to think, Tony knows what he's talking about. He's right. The board is just willy-nilly changing the zoning ordinance. We do not. I'll restart your time.
You may be overriding the people's voice by not including that.
We need to hear your name if you want to talk and if you'd like to wait.
Julie Herman?
You, please. You can, we'll wait until Tony's done.
Thank you.
Similar instances have happened with feedback through this process.
Yeah.
Audience members were directed to take thirty to forty-five seconds to give a statement. Not to repeat anything that they said or anybody else said. It's hard to get a sense of the community's opinion when only one person can speak. Sign during a meeting? That's, that's.
I'm sorry, the what?
The board member sign and whatnot to provide more schedule. I was distracted. Yes, it's very recent. I've already filed this. So another thing that happened in the first meeting, I was online, the board kind of dismissed it and like said, not really going to discuss this anymore. Most of the folks left both online in the room, I can imagine. You proceeded to talk about the finding of facts, um, which most of the, some of them were not facts, uh, which is not my opinion. You can refer to the next meeting, which went back and corrected. If the people weren't told that discussion was done, they may have had input that could have helped that process. So I guess we're all late as far as uh, coming up with some things that didn't seem to go as supporting them, that they might have.
Ms. Herman, do you want to speak?
I'm all set for the moment. Not pleased, but all set.
Uh, okay. Dr. Buffay, one more time?
Let's be short. Um, you may not overrule variances, but you should provide var, I mean, well, ordinances, but you certainly bend over backwards to provide variances. And at the expense of those of us in the community versus those people coming in to do development that uh, is not within the goals of those of us who already live in, thank you.
Okay, I think we're done. I see two more people, but we've had plenty of comment.
Very, very, very common.
All right, I'm going to take these two hands that are in the air and then we're going to be done. Oh, I see one more online. Just Rob West, so that's, that, that'll be it. We'll hear from Bruce Popkin, Gwen Desert, and Rob West.
Yep, uh, Rob here. Just two quick uh, mention that it sounds to me like the uh, the variance that has been granted is in order for the property to be developed to its best and highest use.
That's not correct.
But that's, you know, that's not the direction to go.
And that is not correct, sir.
Okay, I may not have seen any, anything contrary to that, but that's what it sounds like.
Gwen?
There, in Article five, section five oh five of the zoning, Enfield zoning ordinances, the zoning board may authorize a variance from the terms of this ordinance only when it finds that all conditions listed in RSA six seven three on thirty-three of five, one of those being literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance will result in an unnecessary hardship. There is, there has been no evidence, in my opinion, from the board to say if you enforce the thirty-five foot height variance, that there would be an unnecessary hardship. Also, I would like to see about the um, uh, the appraisers not being able to be um, contested by any layperson or Joe Schmo or whatever, but someone on the zoning board who is contesting it should have been considered. Um, it wasn't a town person, but one of your own board members did ask for the second opinion. I agree you voted on it, but it should, because it was contested, it should have been allowed.
Did the board ask to have a second opinion from a different appraiser?
Yes.
Yes.
Did the board?
I made a motion and it was denied.
Okay, so the board did not ask for a second opinion. Mr. Reagan, a member of the board, made a motion. The board decided not to do that. That's the way boards work.
That was the point you made. That's exactly the point you made.
What's the problem?
It was contested.
It's contested.
I think we. That it was contested.
By a member of the board, not the board. There is a difference.
From West.
Uh, Rob, go ahead. And I got to stop talking.
No, I'm good for now. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We still cannot talk to you about the hearing that we had. None of us are permitted to speak about that because we are still in.